All right, guys, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Kimballis.
Stan, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Show must go on, eh? That's the hard level of the pledge. It's
it's extreme mode.
Pledge.
See how good you are.
The reverb.
All right. So this is a work session this evening. The purpose is to discuss some specific, more detailed information about the police' current financial state of affairs and upcoming potential levy for 2025. So we wanted to schedule a separate meeting that we could really just drill down on this particular subject. So that's kind of what we're going to try to stick to for all the people in the crowd. I know it's just two, two guys, but so let's see, let's go ahead and get into. So you want to go ahead and just start, start a discussion off, Eddie? Got some information to put up, I assume?
So just a brief recap. I know this is old news for you guys, but as you're aware, in May 2025, the levy did not pass. It was a 2.9 mil levy generating about $1.9 million. So as a result, the board advised staff to go back to the drawing board and come up with resolutions of necessity for 2.5 to 2.9 mils. We did that. We put together the projections. We did that, we put together the projections and some, and these different scenarios. So what I'll do is I'll hand it off to Chief Brockman, who'll give you just a brief breakdown of the department, how it functions, everything like that. And then I'll dive into the scenarios and then we'll take it from there.
Sounds good.
Chief?
Okay, so we were, we're currently at 18 full-time sworn police officers, including myself. A couple of years ago, this board authorized two additional officers and one part-time officer. And we have never got to that point yet. Mainly because of being very choosy of who we are going to hire in this small department. It's got to be the right fit. But so we went through quite a few interviews and then we had a couple of officers leave. But we've never got to the 20 figure. And we did have a couple of good candidates leading into May, but we thought it was a good idea to hold off hiring them until we saw the outcome of the May election. So we're on a freeze right now. There was a study, if you recall, about six years ago with the UC that said for areas that have 15,000 to 25,000 people, on average, there's two police officers per 1,000 residents. Here in Pearstown Township, with the 18, we're closer to the one officer per 1,000. And we believe we, we provide a very good service here. We have quick response times as well as doing a, a number of community events. We do the vacation checks, which you don't see in every department. We have radar signage, we do wellness checks, senior visits with the elderly. So I think we have a very good connection with our community. And of course, we'd like to see that continue. And we're hoping in November that the residents come out and vote for the levy.
Chief, if you, if you could, I don't know if you already have this plan for further into the discussion, but could you elaborate in a little more detail about what you meant about, you mentioned vacation checks and some other things that we do that not all, you know, organizations do from, from a police perspective, but how does that compare to the, to the county? For instance, can we do a compare and contrast on some of the things that you mentioned? You know, does, does the county do that? And then maybe also kind of like a comparison on potentially response times? If you know generally any information.
Yeah, so my knowledge, the, the, the county does not do vacation checks. Again, I, I can't be totally positive on that. But in this slide, you see a number of programs that we deliver that I'm quite certain the county would not be able to deliver on with, if they were to contract service in the township. And again, we, we feel through National Night Out, Golden Ticket, Shop With The Police. These are programs that are not using township money. It's all from private donations. The vacation checks, we have a number of snowbirds in this township that go down to Florida and parts unknown for the winter time. And it's a very popular program where they will let us know what dates are going to be gone, any special instructions, and we will go and check on their homes. You know, every shift, every night and every day to make sure that the place is tight and there's nothing unusual. And we have contact numbers for that. We also do crime prevention where if a, a resident says, you know, they had a prowler a couple of weeks ago and they'd like to get some suggestions on how to harden their home, we have a crime prevention specialist that will go out to the home and do a walkthrough with the homeowner to provide some suggestions on cameras, on cutting back some shrubbery and everything else to, to, you know, kind of burglar proof. I don't think you can totally burglar proof for your home, but you could take away a good possibility that it would be victimized, they, they might be victimized. We also have a camera registration program with the township where if you are a homeowner and you have a private camera, you can let us know that you have your Ring Doorbell camera or you have cameras around your property. And that way, if we have a crime that happens on your particular street, we know in our database that we can see that there's a, a, three cameras on Merwin 10 Mile that may have caught the burglar, right? And also I know we have a very popular program, the, the Flock Camera System, which we have for one year. It's no cost to the township for the eight additional cameras we got. And we have a spreadsheet that Eddie can forward you that is a, a spreadsheet of success stories that Flock Cameras have helped us locate missing persons, closed cases. We just had a suicidal subject that was located the other night with the help of Flock Cameras. So again, our, our cops are very connected with the community. And I think we can provide better police service than any other entity out there.
Well, I tend to agree. But one of the things I want to make sure we do is, as we discuss this further, I presume we're, you know, we're going to go through each and each of the potential levy options. But doing that, I want to make sure we use the mindset that we want to make sure that we can maintain what we're doing operationally, but also to me, I think it's important to add the two additional police officers that, that we have not put on duty. So if there, I mean, to, to my view, that's what I'm going to be looking for is what is that number that we can take out to the public and say, this is what we're, this is what we are doing as a police department, and this is what we're planning on doing more of.
Yeah. And structured, not even from a crime prevention standpoint, but just the other night, we had one officer that's off injured from a arrest he made the other night. And we had another officer call in sick. That left one officer working from one to one, till one o'clock in the morning by herself and nobody coming on till 6:00 AM. So I was going to come in to fill that shift from one to 6:00 AM. And that's the problem we have right now. And that's what I was trying to accomplish with those two additional officers, not only from a crime prevention standpoint, but just the fact that we have officers that take vacations, sick time, injured, training, and we need that kind of buffer to maintain that minimum of two officers per shift every day of the year.
I mean, I think one of the things that, that I heard as we were campaigning with the levy, I did hear a lot of people say they wanted to see the police on the streets. They wanted to see more, more police. And certainly, you know, voting down a levy is not a quick way to get more police. But again, that's kind of where I, I want to draw that line, get those, get those additional police officers.
Right.
We've grown as a township. There's more, there's, there's more roads that we have to cover. There's more, there's more territory, more people to help, to, to have to, to protect. That said, I think that's important that we, that we do that. You want to just step on into the, into the discussion about the dollar amounts? Because I think that's where we really need to focus our attention tonight. Yeah, I think, I think that with your permission, I mean, that's where we need to get to. This is a work session, so.
I, I agree. I think it's also important that we explore all the options and kind of lay it out on the table on where we're at with things as well. And that's why I wanted to kind of drill down on some of those specifics. And of course, we'll spend as much time as we need to make sure we get, you know, in depth on the financials. But if we, if we were not to pass a levy, once we get in depth on more of the financials, then I think it's important just to educate people on what that could mean, what the options could be. And then in addition to looking at our, you know, what we project out and what we're going to be cutting, cutting costs on. So I agree, financial is very important. That's, but that was my reasoning behind.
No, 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 I totally agree. I, I understand what your, what your rationale was. I think it was great that we, we had the opportunity to hear from Chief Brockerman. But I think what we're going to have to really focus on is what are we taking out, if anything, to the public?
Right, sure.
As a, as a levy coming up in November. So it's just kind of where, where my head is.
Yep, sounds good. All right, so what, what was next, what did you have planned next, Eddie?
Yeah, we just go, I mean, I think if you could just go through each one of the, you know, what we're, what we're looking at from a 2.4, 2.5, 2 point, you know, walk us through. Because I think then that dovetails nicely with what you're trying to accomplish, which is, how do I, how do I get those two cops? If it's 2.4 that, you know, 2.4, 2.5, whatever it is, maybe that works, but I don't think it will. So it's just how much are we generating revenue wise in order to match the, the goal of keeping those, those services that we think are important? That fair?
Yeah, so I can look at that right here. So each scenario that was done, we basically, we were in the projection was we said, okay, there is a level service that is expected and that is early delivered by the most farthest possible, because that's the 18 sworn. They're saying that we need two additional officers. So with that, we put those all into the projection. So what you have is fully 2.5 all the way to the 2.9. Whereas if 3.5, what we're looking at is a likely down of around five years. And in year 2031, you would be looking at, that's it, that's the only time. You have a little bit of care to begin, maybe like we need structural adjustments in that particular year of 2.5. At 2.6, we're also going for five years. In 2031, you see that there's a deficit, you have a slightly larger period, so slightly less cost would be required for not getting to 2031 in that year. When you get into 20 or 2.7 mils, that is six years for that one. It gets a little thin toward the end of August. But as you can see, you get to 2031 based on our projections here. Keeping all this in mind, just like you had, I don't know, where this, you get the budget in 2031, we get a conversation about funding, we might start going, fans of that. So it's our blinkers, rise, just keep that in mind. We have a fire levy placed on the other, you know, other levies that need to be taken into consideration. You're looking early 2030 as well for fire, most likely, but again, we include a super dive analysis. But I didn't ask you why we care if there's a little thing to follow, and I can put them both together. And at 2.8, it also runs for six years. And with this one, you have slightly more breathing room through the end of 2031. But again, this one, that would also run for six years. And 2.9 jumps again, that would be seven years on that level. So that's all considering, an officer would be added in 2007, an officer would be added in 2028, and all the cap backs and everything, apples to apples included. And including Boston, I don't know for all the various different options as well. And spread down to the very different best household. This is the US, that's the data that shows the, their tranche of the housing costs that we have throughout the township. So how many people were activated in 200, 300, 300, 400, and so forth. To have our recommendation, and then of course, the board action that we need here is feedback, all from the rest of the state, if I have to look after the number of units, the amounts. And then we need a motion for one of five resolutions completed out. So we're back into the five different levels, or two, five, two, nine. Who would take that and then further according to places on the ballot.
So Eddie, did I, I wanted to ask you to clarify one thing you mentioned about adding officers. Regardless of which option were chosen, would the first officer be added in 27 and the second in 28? Okay, gotcha. And then these costs to the homeowner that you put there per hundred thousand of home value now. Ohio does it kind of the way they value the, the properties is a little unusual. So per hundred thousand of home value as declared on the auditor's website? Okay, not the actual value, it's whatever's on the website. Okay, and then, good. And then the amounts here, would these be in addition to above and beyond what they're currently paying? Is that also correct? Okay, thanks.
So each one of the options adds the police, the two police officers. But at 2.9, one of the things we were looking at is potential construction remodeling of the existing police station. That would be lifted out in each one of those. We wouldn't be doing that in any of those scenarios. Okay.
So the 2.9 doesn't have that either, or from 2.8 down?
2.8 down doesn't have it.
Yes, when you sign it, sure, they're all the same, right? So you're seeing inside the embarrassing.
But at 2.9, there would be room to do, but two, but, but let's bear in mind, 2.9 was rejected at, you know, the last election. So I'm pretty sure they're saying that 2.9 is not what they want.
Wouldn't it make sense to reduce it to the 2.8 as sort of an indication that we listen to the people? And it would change back with the equality?
I would say yes, on the surface. You know, I think the message was fairly loud and clear with the last one. I think there were other factors too, beyond just the amount with the, the school levy and all that. But a step backwards probably would be more, better received by the voter. Maybe even two steps.
I think that it's really important that we take to the voter what we need and, and what's going to be the most valuable request and get the job done. And if, you know, if what I'm hearing is, is that the police, that the public wants more police on the streets, then I think that's bare minimum what we need to give them. And the, the beauty is that in each one of those scenarios, you've done that. I can't speak for why people voted against it and what the magic number is going to be for anybody. Some people, the magic number is zero and they're just not going to go for anything. But I do think that a lot of thought was put into the 2.9 and a lot of, you know, it was very, very good thinking that went into it to come to 2.9. But I think that, you know, 2.8, as long as it's getting the, the job done, then I'm, I'm perfectly fine with a 2.8. But a 2.4 is not getting it done. And, you know, we're going to be right back at the drawing board. You know, it gets back to that old commercial, you're going to pay me now, you're going to pay me later. So I, I give you a, a levy that I'll be right back here in five years. You know? So.
How do we compare, if you know, or chief, with let's say, union township as, as far as the police mill live, the police millage?
Don't have that information, do you, Ed?
Okay, that's all right.
I don't know what their millage is, but I do know that they do some other things because they've got a lot of tiffs, a lot of debts, there's, there's other financial mechanisms that pay into, that help subsidize the police department. So that's, you know, it, it, to some degree, it's probably not apples to, to apples in the comparison, but it is, and it would be an interesting number to get. But you do, I mean, you're talking about 16,000 some residents in Pearstown Township to, what, 50,000 residents? And, and so it's going to be a much bigger number, no matter what.
Yeah, feedback, well, this town will get feedback from the people as to why they didn't pass the whole, which goes.
From, from the folks that seem to be, you know, opposed to it, there, there was, you know, you know, the, a reaction to levies. I mean, people are being bombarded by, by property taxes. And so I think there's, there's a real sense and a very legitimate sense that, that something's got to be done about, about how much we are loading on to people's property taxes. And we were hitting at exactly the same time that Wes Claremont was putting, you know, their interesting levy on the ballot as well. So you had a lot of pushback from just an anti-tax, you know, rev, you know, revolt more, more than anything else. But I do think there were some people that were voting on it because they just, you know, it's, it's tough out there on people and, and it's, it's difficult to ask them to give more, you know, when they don't have more to give. And so, you know, I'm sympathetic to that and I get it. But we do have to have a police department, we do have to have a fire department. And, you know, this is how we have to pay for it.
But they had two resources.
Well, I mean, Eddie, in our last, in our last board meeting, we, we tasked Eddie with getting, I think it was Eddie, with getting that, that, getting a bid from the sheriff's office to see how much it would cost to have those services. I don't know. I don't know the exact number that Batavia actually has on the street. So I don't know what their contract is going to, I don't know that we'll be able to compare their contract with ours. And I think we're going to find out what ours looks like. Having been through this before, we have had that request before and it wasn't the, the services provided and the dollar amount were not. You know, they just, it was, it was, it was an expensive task. We have to pay it anyway.
Yeah. And I mean, it's worth noting too, that I, you know, based off our current levels of spending and our current staffing in the department. When did you guys project that we would essentially not be able to fund the department at the current level of spending? That'd be an important number to know, I think.
This year, this year with it, the cuts proposed at about $300,000 amount, which would mean next year you'd be operating with an eventual shortfall, assuming expenditures didn't change. So sometime in mid-year, at the six month to 12 month mark would be where effectively capitulation would occur. So we obviously wouldn't want to go into that year budgeting an amount of expenses that were that far above break even, but it would be sometime probably in Q3 or four.
So from my perspective, there's got to be a little strategy involved in our part to ensure that we represent people as best that we can in regards to what may have driven it to be voted down the first time, which I think Alan's pretty much hit the nail on the head with the some of the macro sentiment, you know, nationally against generally against taxes and rightfully so. And then, you know, I, I do think you had a pretty motivated opposition from what I, I think I saw to come out and vote the school levy down at, at a very large percentage. So I think we were fighting against those two things and that could explain a lot of it. But the reality and the reason I wanted the other number is that we have to understand what's kind of at risk here. If, if we don't get some kind of renewal, even if it's, even if it's the bottom one. For instance, it continues to allow our department to operate and to have the, 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 um, your, your own township police department. Where you do have, I know you talk about staffing chief and things like that, but we do have a dedic, a, a designated number of officers at any given time that are only for the township. I mean, more or less, right?
Yes. You know, these, these are officers that are committed to the boundaries of Pierce Township unless there's an emergency somewhere in a neighboring agency where at that point, every agency sends their officers to the emergency. But these are officers that are committed to the township. There are officers that you can, you know that it, it's going to be Officer Nickel and Officer Chesney and so forth, where if, if another agency were to come in, you couldn't always guarantee that it would be the same officer because they could rotate. Right? And so I think it's very important for the officers to know the area, to know who the players are, to know who the community members are and, and develop those relationships.
I got a quick question, Eddie, or chief, anybody who wants to answer it. What's the average price of a home and average value per the auditor's website of a home in Pierce Township?
Per the auditor's website, I'm not exactly sure offhand. I think the mean sales price is in the low 300s. And the latest census data that we had was the median house was in the high 200s. So that gives you a little bit of a feel for kind of where, where the values land. And that's why I included this as well. To show you kind of what those largest groupings of housing values where they hit. The mo, the lion's share, about 50% of our homes are somewhere between 200 into the mid 300s.
Okay. So if we go with that, if you look at your comparison chart, you gave, you provided a chart with what it would cost a $200,000, $300,000 home, et cetera, per year. So if you, just looking at the numbers, but let's say if we go with $300,000 as the average price. If you look at a 2.7 versus a 2.8 versus a 2.9 per year, the difference between a 2.7 and a 2.9 for that particular homeowner is only $30. Right? So if you look at, kind of look at the, the real, what's, what's it going to cost the average homeowner in Pierce Township if we compare a 2.6, 2.7, 2.8, 2.9? So I, you know, just looking at that number alone, and again, taking into account the sentiments that have already been discussed. I think 2.9 would probably be a little bit difficult to pass, only because I think the voters are looking for some kind of rollback. Based on, you know, the failure of the previous levy and the, again, the general sentiment. I think a 2.8 would probably not be unreasonable at all. You know, based on what, again, you're talking about $10, $20, $30 a year. I don't think the average homeowner who studies if, if this is shared in the right way looks at that, you know, I, and I don't know that we're going to do that, but you know, with the understanding that that's what the numbers actually mean. Those are pretty small amounts per year, 10, 20, 30, $40. Probably not going to break most people's budgets. Maybe a hardship for some, but I doubt for the average, you know, as, you know, as we discussed, it's going to make that much of a difference in the budget. So that having been said, my opinion, and certainly I know there's more discussion to be had, but my opinion, at least at this point, would be to roll it back in part for the optics and opt for the 2.8.
But let's bear in mind, that's just the delta between cause the, the actual dollar amount.
That's three thousand.
Yeah, but the, the actual dollar amount, just to be, to be clear, is like $294 versus $300. So 304, 30 to be fair.
He broke it down per month as opposed to, right? And that makes sense too.
Yeah, but right. But I'm simply saying that when we're talking about $30, that's just the delta between, there's a bigger number behind that. Now I'm just bringing that up because just want to make sure we're clear that it'll be, what is that? 200 and 294, 304, whatever. But that's going to be two, that's going to be twice. That's per half.
Is it per half or per year?
Th- this is for the whole, whole year.
That's, that's what I was trying to say, that it's take that 304 and split it in half. Is that you're going to pay one in February and one in.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, this isn't, this is the annual increase. You know, which may, maybe a lot of people can look at that relative to what you make annually salary, whatever your annual income and whatever your annual expenses are and kind of think it's 300 extra bucks. But I, I think Pete's logic is pretty sound. I mean, I, I think we should at least pull back a little from what we went for the last time in order to, to try to really ensure that if this is, you know, people want this level of service to continue and they had the two officers that we need. That they vote for this and we get something passed if that's, if that's the will of the, of the voters. So that makes sense to me. Did you have more stuff to present, Eddie, or?
No, um, the, the only other thing too is I, I know I, I gave you these, you know, the, the five different levy amounts and wanted to keep it apples to apples. Keep in mind, Chief, Chief Roxman and I have talked about this, you know, the way that we proposed officers being added. I mean, if you were to, to be overly, you know, very aggressive one, one way or another, I mean, we can, you know, this is not frozen in time. So th- these assumptions are based off of an officer being in, you know, 27 and 28, which has an impact. The earlier you add them, obviously the more impact they're going to have over time. As opposed to waiting to put them on, on staff, that sort of thing. So just keep that in mind. And I know they have need. But that can affect the overall projection.
But that said, you want a motion to move to the ballot. And we need to do that because we have, the clock is ticking. We have to get this to the board of elections soon, very soon. So I'm prepared to make that motion. However you want it, however you want to word it. I'm willing to make a motion that we entertain a 2.8 mil levy for the November ballot.
Okay. So you, if you wanted to substitute, I, I put my name as a placeholder on.
All right, then you read it and you can have it. Okay, fine.
No, no, but I mean, you could, I, I don't know. I just, I just put it on there because I didn't know.
If it needs to go that way.
Add 2.8 to the end of that, you'd be, be perfect.
Correct. Put it there. Perfect.
So before we do that, I'm in agreement, by the way, but, and I'll second, but it, if I understood your representation of the study from UC, as we're currently staffed, is it so that we are above, staffed above average for a community our size?
No, we're at.
We're way below.
Below, okay. So currently, if we add the two, will we be, how close will we?
We'll still be below, but we're, we'll be in a better spot.
You know, and I wanted to mention too, that we, you know, when we bring a transfer officer in from another department, we give them credit for the, the amount of experience they have and they typically start at the highest level. We can even be cost conscious enough to go for the officers that are right out of the academy and go with the officers that would start at step one versus step four, which makes a difference, right? Because they don't get to that top level for four years. So again, we will do our best to be cost conscious as we add these staff members.
What is that magic number if we were to be consistent with the study?
I'd have to do some calculations.
Okay. Just do that online.
Yes, ju- just assume Pete, it's more than two.
I gather now, right? I'm curious. So, okay. Thanks.
I'll just say, if you want to read the entirety of the motion and everything.
Why don't you, why don't you go ahead and keep it as is? And then you, you read it and it'll be a motion from you.
Perfect.
I'll rescind the motion. So then you can rescind the second and we'll just go with your original motion.
Okay. All right. So, uh, Township Administrator Eddie McCarthy requests a motion to pass Resolution 2025018, a resolution to proceed to levy in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 5705 dot 19J for an amount at 2.8 mils.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right.
All right. So any other discussion?
The transfer. No. I was looking to know, um, when, when we had a media to our, no, but we, we had, or we, they said that not quite clearly, but we added whatever. How many households did we add? And did we add any offices at that time?
We, we added, I can't tell you the number of households. There's a ma- magic number, but it's, but you seem to know. So I'm going to let you go.
Yeah, well, this might be a little, this is old data at this point, but, because there's been some growth, but the pop, our population under service increased by about 26%. So about 3,000 residents. The household sizes, I know you guys know, it's, it's a little larger in, in the village, in the former village as well. So as far as households, I know we, we have over 6,000 in totality now. I'm, I don't want to throw a number around for what Amelia is, but I know their population was about 3K when they, when it dissolved.
We did have.
There was, I believe, one officer that was added.
So it's like, we did not, um, but 4,000 people we had, we had a lot from the next quarter. We didn't, we somehow, the challenge that these two guys need to get that message out about, you know, I asked until then, it will lead reasons. If you're allowed to do that, or there's a, because I, I kept saying, oh, township. And you're explaining to people why you have to do a lot of, we added 3,000 people and we only added one.
Right. There, there, there's, there has to be a real fine line. There's a, there's a very interesting line between campaigning. And so we have to be careful about that. But I mean, from a policy perspective, I think it's very simple. We can say we need more police officers. It just is, is a pure policy matter. We need more police on the streets in Pierce Township. Well, because we've grown rapidly since the last time we've hired, we, we have, we've added an entirely, you know, an additional community completely. And so, you know, we need to have more police on the streets. Our township used to be, you know, 51 miles of road. It's now 57 miles of road. You don't think that set, that, that additional mileage is that much, but it's, it's a distance. And so we have to cover all that ground, cover, you know, all of the safety issues for that, for that territory. And we just, we, we need to, to invest in our police officers, police department in order to meet those needs. It's just time.
Yeah, I think it brings up an interesting point though, too, as far as, you know, like where, where our role is, is a township. And I do think we have an obligation to some extent to make sure people are well informed.
Yeah.
Particularly if they're going to go vote on something. So getting factual information out. That's why I kind of mentioned some, some stuff about what, how we predict this to play out as far as the budget over the next six months to a year. Making sure we're honest with people about that and they understand the consequences and what the outcomes are and what their options are when they go to the polls. What I wouldn't want is for, for us not to do a good job of that piece and getting the facts out there. Have people go and vote it down or something and then be surprised
Right.
when they get a certain outcome in, in six months to a year. So I do think we have an obligation to make sure people are well informed.
I agree.
Well, the my favorite thing to go with on the state is that when a levy is passed by the ones in the past, the county creates an amount of money for it. And that amount of money remains, but the same for ever.
Right.
So if they, they see that there's like three point something rules of levies, they're going to go like, what? Not a dollar? Whereas in fact, that three point rule of levies was to worth one or six months and one or six months is okay. And, and that message somehow or other has to get out there. I don't, I feel it's the town's responsibility to somehow rather than, I don't have to be out there, but that's why I think it's sort of like this trust needs to cure somehow or other ability or responsibility to get that message out of the piece.
Well, those are explanatory facts. It's not campaigning. So I agree with you. Those are, the, those are facts. What we see up there. That, that's not campaigning. Those are facts that are going to disappear in the event that this doesn't pass. So by explaining, as everybody said, the facts that I don't think that's campaigning. I don't know where that line is exactly, but as long as we stick to the factual information, I don't think we could be seen as campaigning. And none of what I've seen so far is theory or pie, you know, just guesswork. It, these are just facts. This is what we have. This is what we won't have if the levy does not pass, assuming that the county is not going to step in and do some of these things. But it sounds like the chief has provided mostly our assurances that they are not.
Yeah. It's fine. It's fine. But you have the, the way we want to get, get the message out to the people. Here's the historical message. Here's, here's what's happening in the past and but I guarantee 90% of the people don't understand that the old levies have a cap and that cap remains for eternity.
Well, the concept.
Is, it's like, oh, we've got all these new houses. They don't realize the new, that means then that their contribution goes down. So as new houses come in.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because it can't burn anymore than what it's been, then it was all.
Right.
They're the proof that's the point, you know? I didn't add it to the all. And there's people when I was trying to work to get that last one passed, I spoke to the gentleman who lives out in the area. He was a cop for 29 years ago. And he said, oh, take that, put money around. I said, they can't put, they can't, can't take it in the general fund. It's got to be paid back. Then when I left and I'm on the way, I thought, oh man, he was in the city, city. It's done differently. And you know, people have to understand that a township or the city and the village, everything grows differently. But he, he was adamant that politicians that move this money around must, they can't, you know, it's, I, I wasn't.
Those are all, yeah, those are all great. Those are all great ideas and great points. I think we can incorporate some of that too. And you know, you get to a certain level of detail. I mean, you're going to have to give somebody a class on government finance, but there's somewhere between there and offering good, high level information about a lot of the points that you brought up that I do think you're right about. The general voter doesn't really understand the nuances of how some of that works. So but yeah, those are all good suggestions, chief.
Yeah. Dr. Cambellus, in doing that quick math on what that magic. Dr. Campbell, since in doing that quick math on what that magic number is, I think it, according to that, it would be about thirty officers. Now, typically, uh, we would not, because of the level of crime, low crime in Pierce Township, we, we would be. Um, too heavy at thirty officers, you know, I'd be happy with twenty uh, at this point.
Well, that piece of information, that's a study, it's been validated apparently by educators. So that would be conceivably a point to make as a part of any, maybe that's on the campaign side, I don't know, but it is a fact. Or it is a study, I guess I should say. Thanks, chief.
Sure.
All right, anything else? All right, guys, well, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion and second, roll call?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.